I'm going to call to order the Board of County Commissioners meeting on this 3rd day of May, 2017. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Katnick.
President.
Mr. Hood.
Present.
Mr. Prince.
Present.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And Clerk to the Board Kelly Camper.
Present.
Okay, do we have any amendments to the agenda today?
I do not, Mr. Chair.
No.
I think I've got one. Well, I reserve the right with your permission to amend it later if something comes up.
Sure.
Okay, audience introduction.
Hi, Steve Cox, West Cliff.
Eddie Collins, rural West Cliff.
Thank you very much. I am publicly commenting at this time.
I don't see anything on the agenda under old business about what we were discussing yesterday on 4H.
We don't have to have it on the agenda because it's already his old business. We can bring up other items that have rise like this one because what we discussed yesterday, this meeting had to be posted 24 hours in advance.
I see. But we aren't going to discuss it.
Okay, as the record show that John Johnson has joined us.
Good morning.
Do we have any minutes this morning?
No.
Okay, Commissioner's items. Commissioner.
Nothing has transpired in the last 24 hours for me to report.
Donna.
Nothing in that way. I reserve the right for executive session.
Okay, no Commissioner items. At this time, the next item on the agenda would be executive session. Do we have a need for executive session today?
We do.
Okay, we will go into executive session. We need to state the, do we need to state the purpose before we go into it? We do, don't we?
Yes.
Okay, and the purpose for the executive session will be?
I actually have two purposes. One is employee and one is for legal counsel.
Having said that then, with the motion, do I hear a motion to go into executive session?
I'll move.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Motion has been made by Commissioner Prince, seconded by Commissioner Hood to go into executive session citing Colorado Statute 24-6-402 regarding 4B. And the purpose of the executive session has been stated. And at this time, we will vote on the motion. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Question. Will the employee be present?
One of them.
Thank you.
So we really need to clear the room for our executive session?
Waiting for instructions.
Okay, we do need to clear the room, please. Thank you, folks, and we will try to move through this somewhat expediently if we can.
Do you need a motion to resume the regular Custer County Board of County Commissioners?
I'll second it.
The motion is accepted. Mr. Hood made a motion, seconded by Commissioner Prince, to go back into executive session.
Back out of regular session.
Regular session.
To go back into regular session, correction, to go back into regular session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We are now back into the regular session of the Custer County Board of Commissioners.
You want to take a break now?
Just take a five-minute break. If you can, for your comfort.
Who is this from?
JD.
Oh, okay. And it's to go to me or?
No. I think Bob asked for it.
Oh, okay. That's from JD.
That's from who?
JD.
Oh, JD. Hmm. Okay, is everybody ready?
No.
Okay. Here's this map we asked JD about. And the problem I see in looking at it, as he's shown the land ownership, is that the BLM just barely touches Corita Road. And it doesn't look to me, and we'll have to see, but it looks like there's enough room there then to make a parking. And we're talking about that right-of-way on the old road. And it shows here that JD's records show that it's still the state of Colorado, Colorado State Highway 96 right-of-way. So apparently the right-of-way is still intact.
If that's the case, then you'd have to go deal with the state on it if they never abandoned it.
We'll need to, you know, continue on, but this is, apparently is a question. What I'm talking about, folks, before we're not even in session yet, yesterday when Justin Kroll was here with the Division of Parks and Wildlife was requesting we try to open up the old Rosita, the old Corita Route, you know, where the place is that's got the eagle alongside the road, there's a road to go straight south. That used to be the old Highway 96. And they're wanting to reopen that to have access to BLM lands for hunters and recreation. And we've got some questions as to whose right-of-way it was, if it's still there, so far as that, that's what we're just visiting about. Ready? I will reconvene the session of the Board of Custer County Commissioners at 10:42. I attest that I am chairman. Pardon?
10:21.
10:21, okay. With the glare of the light, I can't see the clock. I see two black hands up there. 10:21. I attest that I am the chairperson of the Custer County Board of Commissioners and confirm that the discussion remained on topic and that no matters were adopted or no actions or decisions were made.
As the county attorney, I'll state for the record that we went into executive session to discuss a personnel issue. The discussion on the personnel issue was done on the record in accordance with legal requirements. Then, in order to get legal advice from me, from the county attorney on that same personnel issue, we went off the record and there was a discussion. At all times, it remained on topic as to that personnel issue. After that, we switched over to a different legal issue, which was getting legal advice from me concerning the 4H matter that was discussed yesterday and that will be discussed at future meetings as well. And again, there was legal advice, no decisions were made. There was a course of action that has been agreed on as to how to proceed, but there hadn't been any decisions on anything yet, and that discussion also stayed on topic.
Thank you. This does conclude the executive session. Already now, I move into the new and old business. I think I would like perhaps to modify this a little bit. Would you like to give a brief update on where we were or else anything about the?
Well, I know we've got people in the audience that want to know what's happened in the last 24 hours, so I did make the phone call to Mr. Tony Frank. I am still waiting for his response. So that's where we are. So as Clint stated, we discussed some various courses of action, but until I make that contact, nothing can happen.
And we're attempting again today and will continue to continue in this. And again, I remind you, if necessary, we do have a meeting in the morning, if we need to continue on, we do have the ability to do that. Okay? All right, let's move on now to Kelly, the special event permits that we have. We have a number of them. The first one is Club of America.
I need to make a disclosure.
Oh, excuse me. Please go ahead. I'm sorry.
No, no, I just, before these come up on the agenda, I need to probably excuse myself from voting because what's listed here is taking place at my ranch, so it's a conflict of interest.
Which one? Or both?
Your question?
Two of them.
I have, yes, I have a question about Beverly being an independent contractor. Now, I've been reading into the IRS publication 15-A, the 2010 edition, page 6, and it states, "An employee is generally subject to business instructions about when and where and how to work." All four examples of how to work, when and where to work, what tools or equipment to use, what workers to hire or to assist with work, where to purchase supplies, what work must be performed, what order or sequence. So that's not an independent contractor. And based on the job description you read yesterday, she can't hardly do anything by herself unless you guys direct her to.
Yeah, I think there was some confusion with regards to the job descriptions. We had previously discussed job descriptions from last week. That was our work session. The two job descriptions were, we had to bring up what was the county executive, the extension agent. And what I had to state yesterday was that when we are in process with CSU, that that job description will change. And what I was reading to everybody yesterday was what we had in place and pointing out there were things on that job description which Robin did not do. So I was just trying to bring the colleagues up to date with that job description. The other was if we have a permanent person now, because the situation changed, and my word is permanent person hired, what I was discussing yesterday were two interim positions. Those would be contract labor. They're not the job descriptions.
Yeah, but you have complete control of when she works, how much she's paid, where she works, what her hours are, and you try to put a percentage on it. So that's not an independent contractor.
No, that was the job description for the office manager. We're not hiring at this point in time.
We haven't got her job description put together, her contract. Once we have the contract together, we'll be able to discuss it. But I might go another tact, and I'm just, just in a general sense.
I think there was confusion yesterday. It's my understanding that even Jordan Heidberg did not understand that we were saying these are two interim positions that will be hired as contract labor. They weren't supposed to be abiding by those job descriptions. Those are permanent positions within our county.
So are you going to have a job description for the interim people?
We'll have a contract description.
In their contract? Well, if I may, Stephen, just, we've been involved with this Wetmore Community Building for years. We have a contract with the builder, a contract with the architect. But in that contract, it specifies what they're doing, but we have continual meetings and decisions to make with that contractor as we come to specific tasks or specific issues. Some of these, as an example, we say, well, we've got to redo the bathroom downstairs, so we have to go through a change order and all this stuff, and we have to prove it. I think we can work, some of the stuff that we're looking at from the 4H standpoint, here's what we agreed to do, but I think there's some precedent in existing contracts. If you spell it out and keep it clean to where we can still have input, because we have input on a daily basis almost with the contractor in Wetmore's doing the building. Now, that is a contract recognized by the state, or permit, not contract. My assumption is that is a contract legally recognized, and it specifies tasks that they're doing, but in there, there are changes that occur, additions that are made, this type of thing, which is a very routine manner to discuss with the builder, with the architect, and with one commissioner that's over the project, or sometimes the whole board. Does that make sense?
Yes, but he has, one of the other things in here, an independent contractor can make a profit and have other job opportunities. These people don't have any other job opportunities.
I still think there's a...
Well, maybe we should have one of our attorneys.
There's...
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to...
It's not, yeah, it's not an independent contractor. It's a, it's, do you know what a 1099 is?
That's an independent contractor.
Okay, okay, but we can, we have other relationships with people in our county that are 1099 contractors.
But they probably do other things than just the county work. That's what I'm asking here is...
Beverly isn't going to be prohibited from doing other work if she wants to. It's not necessarily a 40-hour-a-week job. It's to work as needed, to do the things that are needed under the terms of the independent contract, so she's clearly an independent contractor. There's no legal issue there.
Well, what we were discussing yesterday were two different things.
So is it, when you guys develop the contract, are you going to bring it before the public so we can hear it?
Of course.
Okay.
We just, we were stating, you have to look at what the course of events was from Friday, Steve. There wasn't much time to do anything but an outreach. And that's what, I thought we were very transparent yesterday with what that outreach was. It's just that there was confusions because our work session yesterday was to discuss job descriptions. It had nothing to do, one or the other. It just happened to be the same topic of events. Extension, extension.
Is that... Yesterday, we made a very serious effort to be transparent, and I felt like we achieved that, just as what we were trying to do. And as we go forward, that same effort will be made. So at this point in time, until such times as we have a contract negotiated, we can negotiate that and bring it before the public so you see what we're doing.
Okay, we're just not there yet. And we're not there yet because I haven't talked to Tony Frank.
John.
Bob, you'll jump to executive session out of order of the agenda. Could you call us where we are on the agenda now?
Right now, I just amended the agenda. We're in new and old business, and because the extension is an old business item, we have the prerogative, and I thought you folks deserved a very brief update on what we had come across on the executive session.
Are you going to go back to the other items, Commissioner's items, Attorney's items?
We've been through all of it.
They're all done.
Okay.
You were late.
You came in late, John.
My apologies.
We went right down the list, John.
Okay, so I suggest we do stay on our...
And we do need, but does that answer where we are, folks? I don't want any misunderstanding, and we are, I assure you, we are...
So how do we find out that you actually have, that you made contact with CSU and you might be having the meeting address in tomorrow?
Would this be something we put on our website?
Yeah, I mean, I just, I don't know what time, Mr. Frank. I'm going to try again.
I know, but how do we know if you're having the meeting tomorrow or not?
Well, right now, we're, as far as I'm concerned, we have stuff we know we'll need to discuss in the morning, at least an update on what's happened the rest of the day. And this meeting may only last 15 minutes. But we do need to have the legal ability to make some decisions if we need to make some decisions tomorrow. And I think as soon as we know, and I think we will have something to report in the morning, as soon as we know where we are, I don't know. What would you suggest to get it up?
I think we move, we meet tomorrow morning. We have it posted, and if there's nothing new, we'll adjourn at that point. But let's meet tomorrow so that anybody who would like to know if we do have information, the problem is we don't have the information at the moment, so if we have it tomorrow, there'll be a form for you to understand.
That's at 9:00 o'clock.
Yes.
And I don't anticipate this meeting tomorrow unless we get really into the weeds going a long time. I just want to have that so if we need to take some official action, that we've got the ability tomorrow to make those decisions. Otherwise, we either have to call a special meeting or postpone it for two weeks. I don't want to postpone it for two weeks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Appreciate your courtesy, folks. Now, we're going to go back, John, on the agenda. We're in new and old business, and we're going to move into the special events. We recognize that Donna has requested to reclusive herself from at least some of these discussions, and I certainly recognize that. Jay, what's your thoughts?
I think she has every right to recuse herself. If it has a personal interest in the county business, she needs to do that, and I appreciate her taking that lead.
So we will, we will recuse, if she wants to participate in discussion as an individual, I think she would have that right, but will not be in a position to vote.
Correct. She has the, if it's okay, Mr. Chairman, she has the right to address it as an individual as long as you go in record and say, "I'm discussing this as Donna Hood, not Commissioner Donna Hood," and then you can talk about whatever you need to talk about.
And one of the things I guess maybe you think about is the trail run. You're involved in that?
I would rather Kelly do her presentation, and it would be, there's two out of three permits here that involve...
Okay, that's where we're coming from, transparency of government and avoiding any perception of conflict of interest. All right, Kelly, are you ready to proceed?
I am.
All right, let's move along. The special event for Club America, Kelly Hunt Concert, is up for discussion.
That's the first one, and it is on June 3. And I have all the paperwork and all of the money. It's been posted, and so it just needs your pages.
Where's it being held? Is that at?
At the Painted View. And it's Custer 2020. Custer 2020 is doing business as Club America.
It's being held at the Painted View, but the person that's making the application is Barbara Sutton. I'll pass those along. Excuse us, folks, while I quickly look at this.
Each one of these special event permits, they have to have their application, they have to have a certificate of good standing from Secretary of State, they have a map of the area, they have to have permission from the property owner, and that's all there. And I just would like to point out also, what the permit is for is to serve alcohol.
So is Kelly telling us that, to the best of your knowledge, that the normal procedures that we follow for a special permit for alcohol sales has been followed and is up to date, and the insurance and all that is up to date also?
I make a motion that we approve the Club of America special event application.
I'll second the motion.
Do we have any discussion?
Nope.
Having none, I'll call for a question. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. As the record show, that Commissioner Hood has recused herself from participation on this particular application. Now, I know I've got a sign here. Well, we can get this before we're done.
Yeah.
Just hang on, don't want to take you... The next item we have is a special event permit for the Chamber of Commerce, Rock and Soul Jam.
Is that another one you're accusing yourself from?
I am.
Okay. I wasn't sure. She said two to three, I wasn't sure.
Yes, but let me just explain this. This is an event that the radio station is holding, but they have asked the Chamber of Commerce to serve the alcohol.
And who's hosting this?
Our local radio station.
Radio station, okay. All right.
And so this is on June 17 at the Painted View, and same thing, they've got all of their, all the stuff that we need. And then, I actually went on the radio station and printed off their little blurb about what exactly it was that they were doing, since this is the first time that they've done it.
Rock and Soul Jam. Noon to the Valley of 2017, Wet Mountain Broadcasting Corporation and KLZR 91.7 FM present a one-day musical excursion to the past. For the majestic Songree to Crystal Mountains as a backdrop, four diverse regional bands perform great music from the '60s, '70s, and '80s, the Valley's own Rimfire, Straight Shooting Rock and Roll, the PA Rockers, Full Throttle '60s and '70s Rock, Boogie Machine, Disco Dance Music of the '70, Biff, Gore, and list some other musical talents that will be heard at this time. So that is a, and where will this take place?
The Painted View.
The Painted View? Okay, okay. Do you see anything in here that needs, I see the maps and stuff are here. Certificate of Good Standing, do you, any, let you look at this. Do you see anything at this time that would be a flag to you?
Uh-uh, no. They've got everything that they need to get.
This, of course, would, you'd have the same opinion if it wasn't Commissioner Hood, is that correct?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special event permit hosted by the Chamber of Commerce and KRLZ called Rock and Jam on June 17.
KLZR.
KLZR, I'm sorry. Thank you.
All right, I'll second that motion. Do we have any discussion?
I just want to add something, just so, because I know, Jay, it's your first time, but what Kelly also does is there, there's a period of time before she presents to the Board. She actually posts the events out at the ranch, the location where this is going to take place, so it's posted for the public to see for a period of time.
Thank you.
Any discussion? If not, I'll make a motion that we approve the...
He already made a motion.
Excuse me. All in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign.
We need a second.
Pardon?
We need a second. Would you second it?
Bob, you'll go.
I second it, John. That's why I got the discussion so quick.
Yeah.
All right, the next one we have is a special events permit for liquor to San Isabel Land Protection Trust's Hardscrabble Mountain Trail Run.
Okay, and this one is for June 13. It is out at Bear Basin Ranch, and they are just asking, this is just a fermented malt, just a...
We're almost to you, Rusty.
And they've got all their, all their paperwork in there.
Ms. Hood, you're not involved in this one?
I am not involved, so I can't participate.
So you're a vote member at this point? Just clarifying. Thank you. Ms. Camper, did you see anything in this one that was out of place?
I did not. Except that it's really hard to find a post, a place to post a sign out there.
Did you check the security, the insurance certificates and that kind of thing?
Uh-uh, no.
No, they don't ask for that.
Kelly, I just want to...
That would probably be between the landowner and...
Yeah. You said June 13th, and this says June 3rd.
Here's the 3rd.
Um... Oh, 3rd. That looks like a 13th to me, because that little slash there, I've been having, I've been struggling with that one.
Okay.
Yes, it is the 3rd.
All right, so to verify, it's the 3rd.
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we approve the special events permit from the San Isabel Land Protection Trust Hardscrabble Mountain Trail Run to be held on June 3rd at Bear Basin.
I'll second the motion as stated.
Motion has been made and seconded, that we approve the special events permit for liquor from the San Isabel Land Protection Trust. Any discussion? The only discussion I've had, I think, is that they had liquor out there before, is this their first year?
They've had it before.
And we have no record of any kind of disturbances or anything from the sheriff, so there's no reason to, to have any kind of concerns.
And on those, on the special event permits, we don't have to check like the, we don't have to get a check from the sheriff like we do on...
We do, I know, we're on site licenses, but I know if we...
Yeah, but I haven't heard anything.
All right, I will call for the questions this time. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Staff reports are, is Gary out there, or are you here?
He's just coming in.
You're here.
He's supposed to be here, Gary's on his way.
We will take, let's, let's move to landfill and recycling. Is Gary out there?
He's walking in.
Oh, he just walked in.
Hello, guys.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good to see you.
Okay, once again, on the subject of the, the air conditioners for the motorators, you know, since we last talked, what we were thinking about going was a factory AC for these things, and they were going to run about $3,000 for the parts, and then installation was going to be about $3,000. But since then, Byron has checked with Thermo King, and they can actually sell us a rooftop air conditioner for these units. And the price is going to be similar, but they're going to be units that are a lot easier to install, and we can just do those ourselves. So that's going to save us quite a bit of money on installation, like, you know, $12,000. So what we're looking at pricewise is $28.8677 for each unit, for four...
$28.67?
Uh, $28.8677.
Okay.
And that would be per unit, and then, once again, we can just install those ourselves.
What do we think, I'll say, Brian, to install them?
Uh, they figure about 12 hours.
Okay, so this is something would be done in a week, then?
Yeah.
And then working around other work and so forth that comes in and has to be addressed in?
Uh-huh. Yep.
Gary, is there any warranty issues with us doing the installation as opposed to someone else doing it?
I don't know about that. That's something I'd have to ask Byron if there is. I wouldn't think so, since, I don't know that he's certified as far as being a mechanic, but I think that we'd still have a warranty with him most likely.
Thank you.
In fact, I think the air conditioner that got installed under the blades, the factory style, is probably, I think there was a warranty that came with it, even though we did it ourselves, so.
I especially like the Thermo King, because this is what most of our refrigerators have.
Right.
They've got a good record of performance.
Uh-huh.
And don't require a lot of maintenance.
It is pretty appealing, the fact that we can do it ourselves.
And it's, I mean, it's a proven unit that I've been around for a lot of years.
Okay.
So Gary, what, what's your bottom line there?
As far as costs, for four units, it would be $11,547.08.
And just to reiterate, that is budgeted, budgeted item, right?
We would, no, it's not actually a budgeted item. We'd have to pay for that out of capital improvement. And I talked to Donna...
We have approved it, I think we have approved it to about, to, to get these installed, didn't we?
Well, I think we were waiting on information on what it was going to cost before we approved it. But you said you spoke with Donna?
Uh-huh. She said we could pay for it out of capital improvement.
I'm not concerned, maybe, I appreciate you providing the warning, but we're saving $9,000 in installation costs.
Yeah.
Or $10,000, $12,000.
Yeah, actually, $12,000 on four units, nine on three, so...
So if we had an issue, we still, and then, and yes, it's got a cost of installation, but that's on a salaried employee.
Okay.
Okay. Do I hear a motion that we approve the purchase and installation of the four air conditioners and the motorators?
I'll make the motion to move forward with the purchase of four units.
Correct.
Totalling $11,547.08.
As long as my math is correct, I think that's what it is, $28.86. What I did was, I've got, they've got these units broken down in the costs for like the rooftop part of it, hoses for it, compressor and whatnot, and I just totaled those up, and that's how I got the $28.8677, multiplied it by four.
Would you consider renting that to, not to exceed $12,000, so if we have a few incidentals, we got it covered?
Sure. So I made the motion to, to read up to $12,000.
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Has some discussion? Gary, something else you want to add?
Uh, no, I don't like that.
Just discussion, just, just because I asked, the capital improvement budget that's going to pay for this, is that coming out of your capital improvement, or is this the county capital improvement?
Road and Bridge.
Comes out of Road and Bridge.
Road and Bridge.
It's a separate, right?
Okay. I knew it well, I just wasn't sure which one was coming out.
Yeah, otherwise, we'd have a...
I wanted to make sure it's coming out of your budget is where it ought to come from, and I wanted to make sure that was appropriate.
Sure.
Thank you. I got it.
Okay.
Road and Bridge is different, because they have their own taxing authority, so we have to be careful on how we, how we structure them. Okay. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Oh, same sign. Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll get them.
This will be nice to have. I know the guys will appreciate it. I was out pushing snow on Sunday, and no warmer than what it was, it got pretty hot in that cab.
Well, it's safety, the dust is where it comes from.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, yeah, as well as, you know...
Could, could you maybe give us a quick update on the, the snow removal list last weekend? How, any issues, or how things went?
It went really well.
Snow dips?
Uh, the deepest snow I think that we found was probably, I measured some over here on 271, and it was 12 inches. Uh, most of it on 271 was probably about nine or 10 inches. Now, over here to the, towards the Elk Ranch, we had some 10-inch snow out there also. But it seemed like the bulk of the snow, the heavier stuff, was in the eastern part of the county and the northeastern part.
Yeah, maybe it had any troubles down there?
No, uh-uh. No, I, on Sunday morning, I helped Vince Coke run that route from over in his area, which went from Resi Road down to Elk Ranch, and we didn't have any problems with it. You know, visibility on Saturday morning was kind of tough, because of, it's still snowing pretty hard, no wind was blowing.
I was out and about at 7:00 in the morning down Copper Gulch, going to Canyon, and that one was interesting, and coming back, there were lots of deep ruts on Copper Gulch.
Yeah, beans, it's as late as what it is in the winter, where, I mean, it's melting and getting real slushy, and, I mean, it's good moisture for the roads, but it just makes it kind of difficult to push the snow off, because the, the road underneath the snow, it's not very forgiving, it's soft, and we've got to be real careful in not trying to take too much off, otherwise we get into the road material, so I encourage the guys to leave a couple inches. And while it melts and turns to slush, and it's not very pleasant to drive in, it's, I think it's the best, best way to do it.
On a different subject, Wetmore, are you, is that working well between what they need from your folks and the Wetmore project in terms of the holes they're digging and the covering of, and that kind of thing? Is that, is that going okay?
Yeah, it is. Uh, right now, their backhoe is down, it, it needs some repairs to it, so they've got ours, and I was down there yesterday, and, and they were installing that sump pump when I was down there.
Oh, good.
And I'm pretty certain they've got that all installed. But it's my understanding, the grease strap's not finished yet, so they're just going to hang on to our backhoe and, unless we need it for something. And I know that on North Creek, they've had some pretty good runoff from the snow melt, and it's plugged some culverts, so that's another reason we left our backhoe down there in case they need to unplug some culverts or something, but, yeah, it's going real well.
Thanks, good luck, Dave.
I've had a request from Jeff Booth here, the Lake Lewis Creek Trail, which is down at Wetmore, where those fires come through, there's a trail that goes, road goes right straight west, and it's a public access road, it's one that we maintain. But when we get on the end of the road, there's a cattle guard that's completely full, there haven't been cattle in there for a number of years, but they're...
Oh, okay.
And they've basically just hung a Potter River panel across it, and people going through it are not, not a crisis, but sometime maybe we could jerk that off so that that cattle guard, dig that out, so that cattle guard could be functional, that we could be part of our forest service maintenance.
And where's that again?
It's on Lewis Creek.
Good for your appears.
And Lewis Creek, when you go down to Wetmore, I hope you remember, there's a forest service sign along the 96.
Uh-huh.
And I think it's about maybe 200 yards up to the north of there, there's a, a little short road that goes off to the west, and that's Lewis Creek.
It says Lewis Creek Trailhead is how the sign is, as you're coming up to it?
23 mile marker.
Pardon me?
23 mile marker.
Okay. Yeah, I'll look into that, if we need to get down there and clean that, we can pull it out, and we'll be there.
Another area, I know we've got a bunch of stuff, routine stuff, here, another area I would love to talk about, Sunday morning, I guess, our search and rescue idea brought on a mission for somebody stranded in a pickup on 12 Mile, which is routine.
Uh-huh.
But at the same time, we had another emergency, and it just so happens, it was Jack Hobby who used to live up here, he works for Peublo County now, and he was east of 96 on what they call, or east of I-25 on what they call the Red Creek Road. He left at 6:00 in the morning, and 11:00 at night, he'd run off the road, got stuck and was out of fuel.
Oh, boy.
And they were trying to mount a rescue mission to get him, and they finally got in there with a helicopter sometime that morning, and the wind had broken up, they could pick him up and take him to the hospital. Uh, my only thoughts on this is, my just thoughts is, if we have something like this happen, how do we respond? I mean, we, search and rescue has got some equipment, but, you know, I don't, they're trying to get a snowcat, but right now, we have our snow machines on tracks.
Uh-huh.
Uh, maybe we, I don't know if, we don't have a cat that's got any kind of a cab on it, do we?
A cat, as in?
A caterpillar blade, a dozer?
Yeah.
Does it have a cab on it?
Yes, uh-huh. We've got a, I think it's a 2012.
Okay. It doesn't, it doesn't matter where I'm going with this, is if we have an emergency where a road crew member is stuck, I, I haven't got all the details, but first of all, Jack's my cousin, so I'll pick on him. First of all, he knew better than to run out of fuel. He'd been out there since 6:00 that morning, so that was 12, 17 hours. You know who I'm talking, you know Jack. He'd been out there 17 hours.
Uh-huh.
And surely Peublo County's got some kind of a limitation that says after X number of hours, you refuel or something, I don't know. But just so we don't, I, I don't think that would happen here, but there was an example of, you know, he was, he was in the hospital, I don't know, just to be checked out or whatever, but he was in the hospital as a result of, it was 30 degrees in the cab, and he was, the last text message he sent, he was very, very cold.
Yeah.
So, that's a, just an emergency thing, so if we have something in mind ahead of time, it's just, and I can't think anyplace we'd strand anybody that we couldn't get to reasonably quick.
Yeah.
Okay, excuse me, and I'm just, go ahead with your report.
Um, as far as work we've got planned, I'd like to replace a cattle guard over here on Y Kegel. We, we actually have two cattle guards on 341, and they're Bureau of Land Management cattle guards. They haven't had cattle in this area where these cattle guards are at for about four years, so we're checking into the possibility of removing those cattle guards, maybe using one of them over on Y Kegel. The one on Y Kegel's real narrow, and I like, I don't know that it's any more than 16-foot, and it really bottlenecks the traffic down, two people can't hardly get across it at one time, so, anyway, I'm looking at possibly replacing that cattle guard, and we've got some great work to do. Um, and then we're trying to do a lot of blading, the snow that we've got's really trapped the roads up, so we're trying to get a lot of them back in shape.
Have we had a chance to look at some signings, pedestrians walking or anything on Y Kegel?
I haven't, I haven't really gotten down to the point where I'm, I'm certain what we're needing over there, Bob. I know that you mentioned it one time, but, I mean, that's about as far as we got on that. What...
I will contact the homeowners association, or you can, whichever you want. They, you know, they were concerned about speed out there.
Right.
And that's when Rusty, we fought forever, is speed going on Y Kegel. And they were concerned about people out walking, out exercising, and not being seen, and I think basically where they were talking was, actually going up that hill, you know, there's one hill there that's fairly steep in the black timber, maybe something along there that says, pedestrian area, or people walking area, or, I don't know what the proper sign would be, but just something that notifies them, but caution.
Okay. So they're wanting the county to purchase some signs and install them, is that what the deal is?
Yeah, it's, yeah, we would just put up a couple.
Well, I've been in communication with the board president over there on this bridge off of Airport on Y Kegel, we're going to be doing some work on it pretty soon, as soon as we get a permit from...
That's the bridge that goes up to Y Kegel, or the one that goes to the country?
It's, it's actually right off Airport, and it's on Y Kegel, and it, it goes north. It's an arch-style bridge, is what it is. It just needs a couple of days' worth of work. But anyway, I was going to alert them when we thought we might be working, so they could divert some traffic.
Why don't you visit, and then we can make a decision on that, but I would, again, just preventative.
Well, I'll do, what I could do, Bob, is get ahold of them and see what they've got in mind, and then get some prices, and then I'll get back with you on it.
We talked about that when, I guess it was Chris and I met with them regarding speed and so forth out there.
Okay. All right.
Okay, you have a sign repaired installation?
Uh, that's just some work that we...
Routine stuff.
Yeah, work that we've done.
The, we had a lady that was fussing, because we put up the flooding signs in Wetmore, and she thought we were being too explicit, and basically the sign said this area may be prone to...
Post wildfire, flash flood.
Post wildfire flooding.
I mean, it's just a warning sign.
And I checked with other people, and that's what Peublo County uses and so forth, so I think the wording prone, doesn't say it's going to happen, but it says it's prone to it, it could happen.
Uh-huh.
And I think that's appropriate language, so I'm not going to worry about it, and I'll get back with her and say, we've gone through it, and that's, that's what we've done.
And I think it's, well, I think it's, Cindy got the idea from what other counties were using, and so she...
Yeah, we did, it's, and the wording, but, but that was just, you know, she lives there at Greenwood in one of those double lights.
Sounds like another example of someone complaining, for sake of complaining when everything, I mean, how could you complain about a caution of this potential flood? We discount those things.
Okay, go ahead, Gary.
Um, that's actually a log down, honestly, I mean, it shows the scope of work that we've done in March, and that's about it.
How is Yale Road coming? Is that, you're working on pines in Yale, weren't you?
Yeah, we're, what we're doing is, we're trying to narrow those up a little bit, the ditches are filled in with material, and the road's pretty wide, so since we've gotten this snow, we've kind of slacked off on working on pines, we're trying to do some blading blading where the roads are washboarded, but, uh, we've still got more to do out on pines.
Any issues with the plant material you're pulling up, does we have to?
No, out in that area, that's actually good material coming out of the ditches, and, uh, some places where you're, uh, we don't have as good a quality of material, and we have to put some road base on top, but out there, I think we can get by with pulling the material out of the ditches, and then when we get down with the road, we can walk away from it and not have to haul anything on it, so.
Once you finish up there, where do you think your next major effort would be?
Well, I'd like to do some work on the road going south of, uh, the lake, on, uh, which would be two forty-one, it needs the same thing, it needs some ditches established on it, and the road's pretty wide, it's probably twenty-nine or thirty feet in places, I'd like to narrow it up, it makes it easier to maintain those, and then one ninety-two and one ninety-three need some work on them, uh, they've gotten low in the middle, they haven't had any work for a while, so.
Okay, uh, and you're, uh, okay, I guess that's what I was thinking.
And then we did some work on Ulay, and there's a stretch through there where it's pretty poor material, it's not very long, maybe a quarter of a mile, but we need to haul some road base on it, and, uh, I plan on doing that.
When we're hauling, does it make any sense to, now, do we do, use our, just a butt belly dumps, or do we use our dump trucks also, our plow trucks also to haul?
We just use the belly dumps, it, it makes the process a lot easier for putting the material on a windrow and then laying it in, so we use the-
And we've got enough to keep everybody busy?
Enough, as in, enough.
I mean, we don't have operators waiting, twenty minutes for gravel?
No, usually, it depends on the distance we're hauling, if it's gonna be a long ways, sometimes they may get it laid down before the trucks get back and be waiting a little bit, but typically, it takes them from the point in time when the trucks and trailers dump the material, till they get back there, it takes them that long to get the material laid down, we lay it down as they haul it.
Okay. Anything else, if we wanna look at fuel consumption from the county, and, and by the road and bridge, and, and the sheriff and so forth, it looks very similar to what it normally looks like? Um, we do have the budget in here, and for capital improvements, uh, let's see here. Are we missing that?
It's not actually lying on him on there, that I'm- When I talked to Donna, she said there was about a hundred thousand dollars in there in the capital out.
How's the new truck working?
It's working fine, we did have a problem, we were gonna haul a piece of equipment to Peublo, and we don't have a headache rack on it, and that tires are designed, I mean, the lugs are such that they pick up rocks, and we had one hit the back glass in it and break it out, we've since purchased a used headache rack that we're gonna put on it, so we can probably hopefully prevent that from happening anymore, but otherwise, it's working.
And it's been a few weeks, but Donna and I did review the job descriptions that you submitted, we made some, um, corrections and comments, and sent that off to, uh, Ms. Mummy at CTSI.
Okay.
So, we're just waiting back.
You get them back and you pass them on to him, then?
Well, we're gonna do that all at once.
Yeah, but I mean, once you come back, you'll have adequate time to look at it, to be sure that it meets his needs, and we're not?
Yeah, yeah, we were just being consistent from one to the other, just with the way things were listed.
Sure.
Okay.
Works for me.
Uh, we have the RFP for the Hermit Bridge, and, uh, we should advertise in the, they didn't, um, did you write this, Donna, or where did this come from?
I did not write that.
Did Bobby write this, or you, the RFP?
Actually, uh, Brenda did.
Brenda did?
Uh huh, she actually, Brenda, you got some templates and some suggestions?
Yeah, Jimmy, Jimmy Hayson, who's the project manager, project coordinator, whatever, um, gave me all the templates, and I just filled it in for our, uh, needs, and, um, Gary has given me some feedback, and I made some tweaks, and, um, this is, uh, what I sent to Jimmy, and he approved it, so.
Yeah, I think it's gonna meet the needs for what we, for that project.
So, we, I, I guess we need to decide where you wanna advertise it.
Yeah, I think we need to, do you guys see the page I'm talking about?
Yeah.
Uh, I think we need to advertise in the Tribune, as well as the, what do you, what do you think?
We need to, we need to advertise it in three newspapers, is that right?
It didn't say specifically, I have a couple of engineering firms that I'm going to send a letter to, and then it's, it's just advertising, it doesn't say, but, you know, I don't know, are there engineering firms around here, I mean, the Tribune, or the Sentinel would be just for local, yeah.
For local, and then I'd, I'd suggest advertising maybe one of the newspapers in, well, even in Springs, I think in the interloca, I was thinking in the interlocal agreement that stated in there what needed to be advertised in three newspapers, I'm not sure.
I don't know.
Is that what you-
I think so.
Okay.
So I'd suggest maybe one in Peublo, and maybe one in Springs.
And that's what I have, Peublo Chieftain, and the Springs Gazette, and then the local.
Alright.
Which every paper, or both, or whatever.
Yeah, but you suggested what?
Uh, one of the, uh, newspapers in the Springs, and one in Peublo, and then our local.
And we have the Gazette, which is in the Springs, we have the Chieftain, which is Peublo.
Okay.
And then both are local papers.
Uh huh.
Okay.
Yeah, that's what I'd do.
Well, only one local paper is listed, if you want the other one to-
That's what we're saying, we, I just mentioned earlier-
And that was just a, um, what do you think, type of a thing, so, it comes up to you guys.
If we do a local, it probably would do with the Sentinel, since there are, um-
The Sentinel's on there.
Okay.
But are you saying you want additional Tribune?
I think we wanna add the, I think we added, as we, as we act, I think we had-
I thought you were talking about him in lieu of the Sentinel, I apologize, I didn't understand.
No, no, I think we need to add the Sentinel to the papers that we have here, I mean, the Tribune to the papers, that would be Tribune Sentinel, both local, Chieftain in Peublo, and the Gazette in Springs.
So four papers, okay.
Thank you.
Do they have to do an approval on that, uh?
Who?
Can we, as far as this RFP, do they have to approve that, or make an approval on?
Uh, I think it ought to be.
Okay.
It's my opinion, but.
Sounds good.
I concur for a legal opinion.
Thank you.
Maybe make an approval on the way it's written in the advertisement, uh, in the, in the, those four newspapers.
So how do they get the?
Oh, I know what you're asking, we're gonna put all that stuff on the county website, and then the, the link to that will be, um, in the advertisement.
So we need to put that, we need to add that to what we have here for the RFP then?
Um, she's got all this.
It's, it's already in the newspaper ad.
All of this will be pages of things.
This attachment's going to go in the, in the newspaper?
No, no, no.
That I've written a separate ad for the newspaper, did I, did I not include it in your paperwork?
That's his first page.
Well, I have the RFP here, and then where we're gonna go with it.
This is a separate-
Then I've got another sheet over here that's labeled Attachment One.
Yeah, the, all the atta, the RFP and all the attachments will be on the website, and the newspaper ad will have the link to the RFP.
That's what I'm asking, so we've got that?
And I, I'm printing it out here, and, um, and I've already talked to Chuck, and he's all good with it and everything, so.
Okay.
And that'll have the bridge report and the site map on trouble for two words?
Uh huh, and actually, I'll have to, since it's more than one attachment, I'll have to, um, I'll have to put more than one link in there, so.
Gary, the scope of this project in terms of, what do you anticipate, are we talking about a ten thousand dollar project, a fifty thousand dollar project, I mean, I know we'll find out when we get the bids back, but I mean, what, what's the scope of it in?
Up to one forty. An arch style culvert, which is what we'd like to go with, aluminum four sided culvert, is gonna run about sixty-five thousand dollars, and then there's their engineering costs on top of that, and then, um, the demolition of the old structure, and road prep work, and so on and so forth, we're talking another thirty or forty thousand, so, it'll be less than one forty.
Okay.
And also, I think we were talking earlier about getting it done within a week or something?
Yeah.
Having it in next week.
And we're not gonna do this till fall, so we don't interrupt people's hand?
Uh, yeah, we're thinking October would be the best time for us to do it.
Jimmy said that they can't get their paperwork done until like February, that's the new timeline.
That's what I saw, your correspondence said next spring.
Didn't you think we could go ahead with the project, we'll just, we just won't be refunded for it until next year, is that right?
You have to talk to Jimmy, but he said that the paperwork won't be done, CDOT won't have their paperwork done until like February.
Yeah, well, I might, I'll get ahold of CDOT, and I'll find that out, but it was-
But with that in mind, you've got a timeline on here, so have you looked at the timeline?
It's five years.
Uh, the anticipated schedule that I'm talking about right now, says, uh, proposal, submittal deadline is June second, interviews June seventh, designer selection June twenty-one, fee negotiation June twenty-second, uh, presentation of the selected minor July fifth, and date for design information to the county August one.
Now, that has changed, and I sent that to you, um, a couple days ago, when I talked to Jimmy, and, and that date for design information, Custer County, Jimmy said to make it February one, two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, I see that, my left day one.
And because they won't have their stuff, it takes them that long to do their stuff, so.
Let's get it in the books.
And just so we're on the same page, we visited about this, but I, I want some colleagues' comments, but I would like to see this bridge across, almost across the right of way, so we have room for people to walk alongside of it, and not have to walk into the traffic lane and walk across the bridge.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can relay that information to the engineering firm that we end up-
I mean, it's not that much farther, but it makes it safer, I mean, we do have room there, I think.
And when I got a bid for the culvert design for this roadway, that's something we talked about, because I knew that you'd mentioned that, so.
What do you think?
Obviously safe.
Yeah, we're getting a lot of people walking from town out there.
I see it on a daily basis.
I walk that way all the time, I prefer that, so I'm agreeing.
Uh, the ad that Donna, Brenda has compiled, I guess Donna looked at it, "Just kinda soliciting proposal for qualified firms to provide engineering design services for the replacement of a three to six foot diameter CMP."
Corrugated metal pipe.
Corrugated metal pipe on County Road one sixty over Grape Creek, this design shall be an arched four sided culvert that meets CDOT standards for culvert design, the project design shall accommodate for current roadway traffic configuration, and for the element right of way while providing for safety and configuration of local traffic, RFP documents and related information can be found at the website, and that's, uh, PDF RFP Hermit Bridge dot PDF, in addition to the county lead-in. Uh, proposals will be received by the Custer County BOC, our address until four PM June the second, may be submitted via hard copies or via email, and Brenda's, questions concerning this RFP should be directed to Brenda Geady, or email to brenda@custercounty.gov, do you want that come to you also?
We've actually changed the wording since, 'cause in here it specified what we were looking for, as far as designing for the project, we've actually-
Oh, right, right, yeah.
Do you have the updated?
I have, I, I didn't change the newspaper ad to reflect the update of the RFP, so.
We're not gonna specify in there what design, uh, we're looking for, as far as a four sided corrugated metal culvert, we're just gonna leave that open for the time being, and then, once the selection process is taken care of, then we can specify to them what we're, we're looking for as far as the structure to go back in that, that roadway, so.
Now, when we finish this one, I'm wondering what will be our next one, will that be pines or will that be?
Schofield.
Schofield.
Uh, either, I think they're both in about the same condition, honestly, so, yeah, flip a coin and choose one, honestly. Uh, what I'd like to do is get with the state and see what kind of federal funds are available for another project, because, uh, a lot of times if these federal funds aren't used up by us, they're gonna be used up by somebody else, and it's first come, first served, so even though it's not urgent to get these structures replaced, if the money's available, go ahead and get our hands on it now, because it might disappear later, so, I'll check with, uh, CDOT and see what I can find out on federal funds availability, and go from there, but as far as which one, either one.
Have we had a chance to, have you thought about starting the road counts?
Yeah, but our counter's broken down, and we're working with Chuck, Chuck trying to get it fixed.
Okay, but we're, we're working on it.
Yeah, I wanna get that, I wanna get it working, so I'm curious to see what kind of traffic numbers we're getting on these roadways, and, uh, this has been ongoing for about three weeks trying to get that thing fixed, first we thought-
That's right, you're on it?
Yeah, well, I'm on it.
And I would suggest that we look at traffic counts on, on pines and Schofield, and see which has a higher traffic counts as part of our decision process?
That's a good idea, on which structure to take care of next, so, if we get that thing going, I'll just-
Okay, while we're waiting for this, uh, I'm gonna jump ahead of my money to the Verdumont Tower, uh, do you know where the Verdumont Tower is located, if they showed you, when you go Verdumont Road, and you're going through that private property, maybe you can help me out here, it'll be rusty, uh, describe a little more the location of that tower.
No, I've never been up to it.
Okay, well, what we have, the way the requests come down through me, is that, and I've gotta get with you and see what that agreement says, initially, they thought that we owned the land around the tower, but we can find no evidence that we own it, it's just there by agreement.
What kind of tower is this?
It's a radio tower that we use for, I think road and bridge is off there, sheriff's off of there, um, this search and rescue, I think, is that, I think, it's, it's for emergency use, and we can hang a cell tower up there for phone service and stuff.
Yeah, okay.
But the request I had was that the road hadn't been worked in a number of years, and was to see if we could grade it up to the tower, because it is a county tower.
Okay.
And, nothing that has to be done every year on an annual basis, but the landowner up there was, says it's getting so rough, we can't get up to it, and I'm sure Roger can take you to it probably.
Alright.
I think it's something that- Unless you folks have any objections, but where's the county tower, I think we need to be, uh, where we can access it.
Yeah.
Okay, did you find that, Brenda?
Yes, um, yeah, instead of, uh, it specifies an arched design, all it says is the anticipated that design shall meet CDOT standards, that's all it says, so.
Yeah, we just need to keep it pretty big, instead of-
So that will be, we'll put in the paper, what you have there, could you print it off for me, please? Okay, uh, letter of intent for organization experience approach, do, do you have that?
Yeah, I'm gonna say, Brenda, I don't have the most reason, I've been looking, um, the change that, that these guys have, for some reason, I don't have it.
I don't have the latest.
If it was in addition to the five-three board packet.
Yeah, I emailed it like, um, Monday, and that might be why, since things have changed a bit.
Okay, I'd like to move forward, we do have the selection criteria, um, and the scope of the work, uh, it looks to me like we're pretty much routine, have you seen all that stuff?
Uh huh.
Yeah, the scope of works, uh, the same with the, um, evaluation criteria, I think it's good to specify it now, so there's no questions down the road. And here's a very bad picture.
Yeah.
And, uh, transmittal form, which, I'd like to change today, is named your name, you have that, all that stuff?
Yeah, that's in the bridge report, I think.
Twenty fifteen, I've got a letter that, um, come from the bridge inspector. In October twenty fifteen, have you seen any of these bridge reports?
Yeah, and the thing that caught my eye is the sufficiency rating, they're starting to go down on it, I think the, the inspection reports are like biennial, and I noticed that they rate these bridges by a sufficiency rating, and the sufficiency rating, a sufficiency rating of about eighty-five is pretty good, yeah, I think the last one I saw on that bridge was like sixty-four or something like that, so in two years, it's dropped that many points, twenty-one points, so, it's a structure that probably ought to be replaced.
It is safe, that's right?
Yeah, it's safe, it's just something that needs some attention, preseason, or, so we can leave it in the open for another time.
I see one of the structures unexpected, and there's one down there on- I see one of the structures unexpected is the one down there on South Hardscrabble. Have we got a line and can we get a line drawn on there? We were talking for the water height in the creek.
I was down there, when I was down there day before yesterday, I looked at possible location for a gauge and till that snow amounts, we can't really do much.
Oh, yeah, too much snow there now.
Yeah, yeah, as soon as that snow gets melted down a little bit, I'll go back down there, I'll look at it closer and we'll get something designed and in place. We're talking about putting a water bench down there on, up on that bridge by, um, east end of South Hardscrabble.
Okay, where is structure 0.01-3A? Is that, is that hermit?
Uh, without having that stuff in front of me, I can't.
I don't.
Not sure.
I don't.
Which one are you talking?
Well, I'm just trying to start down the list and see what.
Oh, yeah, I don't have all this in front of me, so I'm not, I'm not able to tell you. If you're wanting to know about all these, I can.
We don't, I'm just, we don't need that right now.
Okay, offhand, I don't.
But that's. Do you folks see what I'm talking about here? Do you have that in your record?
I do not, I don't know what that is.
This is just part of our bridge report. It's recommended work on each one of these bridges.
From the state?
It comes from our bridge report that we have by now, like, every two years.
I don't.
Well, here we are, right here, that we have the, this list is Hardscrabble, two Lappin Cricks, which is the clubhouse and the Y Kegel Road.
Oh, it is on there. It's on a bridge report.
You find it?
Yep.
What day is it?
Where I am is, uh.
We have no restrictions.
4/28, Hermit Bridge, RFP for 5-3.
Okay. Well, I think what I would like to do if we, it's appropriate, would be to act on this RFP and we can review the road report at a later time. So we can move along, does that accomplish you folks? Okay. Do I? Do I hear a motion to? Publish the request for proposal?
Make the motion that we move forward with the Hermit Bridge project and the initial step of publishing in the four newspapers identified a request for proposal for contractors.
I'll second that, or do we have any discussion? The only part of discussion I would have is that we have reviewed the ad that will be placed in the four newspapers, in the Tribune, Sentinel, the Chieftain, and the Gazette. And that's all the one from a discussion standpoint. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye, aye, all the same saying, motion carries. Anything else, sir?
I think that's all I got.
Okay, do either of you have anything else for road research?
Pleased with what's going on, I appreciate your work.
I want to commend you and the guys that work really hard. I know you were busy this last weekend because I heard you. And we can't get it replaced, but we think you're doing a good job.
Thank you.
Pass that along to our projectors.
I sure will.
Thanks for working on the weekend.
No, you're a part of it.
This guy just, you never know, I mean.
Yep, thank you.
Tell it not to snow in the week, then you want us to work on it.
The other day, it didn't snow when he was working. The other day was working on Friday because the road was moist and he got graded and didn't want to wait until Monday. All right, Gary, thank you for everything. Next, we'll tackle.
Hell rusty.
Good morning.
You're impatient.
I apologize for running late, rusty.
Okay.
Anything new and exciting?
Uh, not really. Kind of a short, I think, today, so. We did have an inspection.
You mentioned that was coming up. Was that that same day? Where we met, Wes?
Right.
Or 26, no apparent violations.
Okay, I'm impressed because considering all that goes on, I mean, you think, to secure their, it's kind of like a food inspector. They like to find a little thing just that looks like they're working. When you get no apparent violations, I commend you. I mean, that's great.
We have 7, 700 yards in the first quarter, 29,000 income. That's about where we're going to just be being.
Yeah, I actually gave you 2016.
Mm-hmm, that's 2016.
And 2017.
So we have, this is 16, oh, here's 70. We had 5 grand.
Right.
We've increased 200 yards, 300 yards. I'm comfortable with that. Do any of you have any suggestions or questions?
What did you think of the discussion with everybody that was in attendance at the last meeting down in Wetman?
I think that it was refreshing, actually, to have car out Department of Health want to help out these smaller landfills. What a, what a great thing. I just haven't really ever heard anything from them like that before. So that's positive on that end.
They were good resources. I was just wondering if you've had any other communication with them since that meeting? Are they going to get the ball rolling?
Yeah, we talked a little bit when they came out for their inspection, but nothing more, you know, just, um, they did tell me that on a transfer station that the regulations are a lot less than a landfill. Of course, we already knew that.
Well, we didn't know that, so that's good to know.
Yeah, regulations are a lot less.
Okay.
Still going to pay for a well?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No kidding. I thought fell over when they said that.
Me too.
Well, it's been a bone contention for a while. This is one of the cases we're putting it off. Saved us.
Right. And hopefully, we only need to drill one well because it's very expensive to monitor one well, let alone two. Especially as deep as they have to drill. You know, if they go 300 feet, 400 feet, whatever, it's expensive to monitor those wells and plus to send it to the lab, so. We'll talk them into one well.
How are we going to move forward ahead in getting pricing? Because that's what we were asking for.
Pricing for the well?
No, we don't need that. It would be looking at everything and trying to decide which way to go. A transfer state, you know, station. You had brought up your idea. I mean, I just, I don't want us to just keep sitting on this. I want to see.
Right.
Where we are on this, that Chester was telling you about? They've modified that some, they're no longer using basic council garbage because they have glass in their compost and people don't like to have glass in their, in their flowerbed. So they're using primarily cardboard as their carbon source. But they're able to, to go through it, it's now a one-day process instead of three days. They don't have to turn the winros, they just build a big pile and cover it with cured compost and go through the process that way. We do have invitation to go down to Desert Pine Top Lake site. The gentleman I talked to wasn't there when I was there, but he was aware of the work that we had done. And I'll be visiting with the Roundwater folks. They're interested. And I guess the bottom end of this, I would see it would lose, potentially lose cardboard to recycling income. But at the same time, as you go through that compost process, I think it would have a, well, I don't, we'll just have to see what the reduction in landfill might be. In other words, we may just take household waste and compost it with the idea that we're not going to try to sell it commercially because of the glass that we're composting it with the idea that we're going to be able to reduce the amount that goes into the landfill. And that reduction, and I'm pulling parts off the top of my head, but I think that reduction, I still think it's between 70 and 80% reduction in volume. So that's, you know, this is stuff that we've got on the table, but.
Sure.
This process has been used for over 20 years. So they pretty well have the bugs out of it. And the thing we have to look at if we want to have a viable commercial product that we're selling, or if we're doing it only to reduce the volume and extend the life of the landfill. So that's where I am on it, colleagues. I think probably what we're going to do, once we get with Round Mountain and they just haven't got back, but probably set a date and go down and look at it, spend the day. If some of you folks want to go along, we could comment at that also. But I think it would be worthwhile. They've also offered to go through their finances, through their records, so we can see what it's cost them. So we can see what it costs with the system they currently have. And then we can come look at it and see what we can go with from there.
Should we be coincidingly looking, researching with a transfer station?
The thing that, that will have to happen, either way we go, it's going to involve having a building.
For his and a transfer station.
And labor.
Right.
We'll still have to man it. We don't have to bury it, but we'll still have to man it. Is that right?
Right, right.
But didn't they say they would help us?
I think.
Looking at those, well, they were also talking about placing transfer stations possibly closer to us. So we still have some work to do also.
They do, they do. And their grant money won't be in until 2018, sometime in 2018. So that's a little ways out yet.
And it's not totally, and I'm not saying we're going to do it, but it's not totally out of the realm to possibly suggest that we end up selling the landfill to a commercial operator. Because we do have value, we do have assets out there. We do have permits.
Sure.
That will be difficult for someone else to go through that process. So if we wanted to do that, we also have the opportunity to maybe recoup enough from, I mean, sure enough, pay for all the costs we have to go to put a building and everything.
Right. I guess for me, because I'm an action person, is I like to see a timeline of how we're going to look at things and evaluate them and get the research done.
Well, I would say, Donna, realistically, that we probably won't go to Arizona until June because the month of May is already pretty full and we also have full plates. I would suggest that maybe if we, do you want to research the transfer station stuff a little bit?
Yeah.
In that same timeframe?
I'm booked for this month.
And then.
Out there, trying to get that other trench started, so after this month and then we can really get, really get going on things.
I also heard a very nice compliment. And I'm going to quote this. I'm going to clean it up, but he said, "I dang near run off the road when I saw you had a scraper out there digging trenches." Meaning, damn, that's good.
Well.
You know, yeah, I mean, we're not doing it with the front-end loader. We got a scraper out there and this particular person made the remark, "Wow, hey, that's right, that's good." I said, "John, that was Rusty's idea."
Yeah, it's, uh, then you just have a one-man operation going on, so.
Okay.
Lot more efficient.
Yeah, I know, I'm going to say, within the last couple of weeks, we were made aware of a complaint with regards to hours. I don't know if you saw that. Is that addressed?
They were in out there, thought it'd be open and it wasn't. And again, we do have the posted hours. Is there any amount of manpower that is here?
It's on the, it's on the website and.
Well, this.
And it's in the, in the Tribune.
This, they went out though, and it was during, I think, posted hours and it was closed.
At 3:30, they said it was closed and it was supposed to be open until 4:00.
No, unless it was a windy day, which we haven't closed for wind for a while.
Okay, well, we'll watch and see, but that's, and it may have been a windy event, I don't know.
Yeah, yeah, because that's the only time that we close is if there's high wind. So it has to be going 35 miles an hour for an hour.
For that to happen? Can I just suggest that, is there any way, place to post a sign if you have to do that because of wind? Because people may not have that same wind in a different part of the county and traffic being there.
They don't, they don't, right, right. And when we do close, then I put it on the answering machine too, so people could call and then they get the message that way too.
Well, I could just put a sign out that this is in the event of exceeding 35 miles an hour, the landfill may be closed.
Yeah. Yeah, it's on the website too.
As you drive it out, you see that. But I know I've had winds in the last two weeks, three weeks, on my place, that have exceeded 35 miles an hour in the afternoon.
We try to stay open. We'll close the pit at 35, but we still have the roll-off where people could put their bags. But when things start flying around, it's time to close the gate. And so we do.
Okay, anything else?
Don't use the word prone.
Pardon?
It said, "Don't use the word prone in the sign."
Oh, right.
Apparently that caused some consternation with someone previously.
Little inside joke.
It was an inside attempt. A very poor attempt, it seemed.
Okay, I know we've got a 12 o'clock workshop and we still have two more reports to go. Anything else?
And I think I sent a quarterly report that we have to send to the state too, every quarter.
Yep. For signature.
Okay, now, so what that is, every vehicle that comes in the landfill, we have to pay the state so much money for every vehicle and every commercial vehicle. So that's where that money, that's where the total is down there.
It comes in from the people dumping and then we have to pay the state their cut.
Yeah.
Because for Mexico, we call it more detail.
Cars are one price, pickups and trailers are another price, and commercial vehicles are another price, so that's what that's all about. So they can save up to help pay for our well.
Well, congratulations on your inspection.
It's a great thing.
Please congratulate your employees out there on behalf of the board.
Because they go through everything. They.
Well, you can see here, it's.
All right.
Good. Okay.
So that's a good thing, yeah. Good news.
Sorry to keep you waiting. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Donna Hoppy.
Oh, Donna Hoppy's napping back there.
Oh, I thought Dennis was up.
Oh, are you on? Come on, give us, I'm sorry, I just assumed you're both there, I apologize.
He just, yeah, forgot to. He just has a check for that last load of cardboard.
Thank you.
That's all, I was going to tell you, we got a nice check. Yesterday, $4,039 for our cardboard recital.
Great.
So congratulations. That's new money for the county.
Yeah.
Well done.
That's super.
And that's the biggest one we've ever had.
Wow.
$39. It's just over $4,000. Just wanted to let you know that that's new money.
We're contributing to that at the ranch.
Well, right now, the commodities market is good for cardboard, $190 a ton. It's been as low as 75 and I just wanted to let you know that it's.
$90 a ton?
Well, it's $190 right now.
$190.
So, but how many ton would that 4,000 represent?
Uh, 22 tons.
20, about a semi-load.
42,000 some 560.
We're hurrying, we're hurrying, Lisa.
And that's, just wanted to let you know, that's.
54 bales.
54 bales, that's new money, it's not tax money, it's not.
I guess probably since you folks have been here as commissioners, this is the first time you have someone come in from the landfill and say, "We got new money." So. Sorry, I thought you and, you and him were together on the same report, so.
Well, sort of.
Yeah, good. And thanks for doing what you do.
See, it's catching. Sorry. If we could just keep it. Of course, not much. I have redone those job descriptions and so you can peek at them if I missed something. I should have put them, the two together. I should have put them, the two together.
Thank you.
And, um, I have the closure policy as well. And there are three copies, just so, we have an original signature post, original to put on the personnel policy, and the other one just in case, because after the copies they get are good. So there are those.
Um, so we should fill in yesterday's date on there, huh?
Is someone working on a list of phone numbers?
Brenda. I could, but it would have been pretty rushed. Um, let's see. Do you need one for yours, so that could be the spare? One to post, one for my policy, and one for you to, I don't know, I I don't know what it does. And I'm good with not knowing, honestly.
Let me think on that.
Yeah, it's like, I don't know. But if not, I could always print another one off, and we could date it inside, so you can have it.
I guess we could record that one. So what was changed was the grammatical, it's from yesterday.
And when I could color, make copies of the color, it just looks, yeah, it's just not fun anymore. I like it on the first go-round.
For your information, I know you and I had a meeting scheduled at nine tomorrow, we have a B O C C meeting.
Well, that'll give me a little more time to get the updates, and you go from there. Have a little bit of paperwork for us to talk about too, and then this came through.
I guess the one thing that bothers me a little bit is that I close, oh, we make the decision, actually, we're shutting down. Then I need to make six or seven or eight phone calls. Why couldn't we just have a calling tree that the U L C could activate?
And that's fine unless it costs us money. Guess I'm frugal.
That's what we, we agreed yesterday.
I know, but as we look at this, that means we have to be, we, who makes the call has got to make those seven or eight phone calls. And I'm just wondering, we have the U L C notify the public. We can go on with this, because we're gonna sign up when you do later, but that, you know, we have the responsibility that they're notified.
Those people?
Yes.
Yeah, but where I'm coming from is that we have a blizzard out here, we shut the office down. Then I've got to have a calling list. I'm ranking, how many, figuring, maybe seven phone calls or eight?
Each one of us, because we were gonna divide it up to the departments that we're responsible for.
Well, see, we don't have that.
There's the phone tree so far.
That's the tree. You originally talked about each of you letting your departments know. Brenda letting the elected officials know.
But that doesn't, it says that we let everybody know. I'm just, it's not a big bone of contention, but, you know, I don't have any problem letting my departments know. But I'm, I'm, whatever makes the most sense.
Well, um, it could be that if we can't get ahold of, if only two of the three commissioners are available, or one of the three, then that commissioner might be, have to make all the calls, so.
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah.
If we all three there, that's not an issue. If we all, pardon my, my English language, I did pass English one oh one, and I made it all the way through one oh three. And I did pass my English proficiency required to get my degree. Would you, what one of you are, you're comfortable with that? Say you're occupied, and that's unusual.
Yeah, I mean, we agreed to this yesterday, there's not that many department heads, if I need to make ten phone calls, I make ten phone calls, I don't see the issue here.
I've been used to doing that in the past, so.
Yeah. Twelve, fifteen, I mean, it's not like I'm gonna make a hundred, even if I was making a hundred phone calls, if that's what needed at the time.
Well, and actually, I could, we could go on, I'm gonna say I could, but I don't think I can do a Samsung, somebody who knows a Samsung could go in and make you a call list, and you could text everyone and have them reply. But I can't do a Samsung, but I know other people know Samsung.
And just waving her hand back there. Well, let's, let's prove this, let's act on this procedure, or we need to fine-tune it. We'll fine-tune it, just take it as it is.
Okay.
Do I?
We acted on it yesterday.
I know, but we can always amend something, just because we did it today, yesterday doesn't mean we can't
Right.
tweak it today, but okay.
But that'll make it really easy, you can just go, she'll, she'll name it the closure list, you can go in and say that one sentence and hit one send, and you're, you're good to go.
So she needed three, she needs three signatures?
Well, let's see.
These are all the same thing.
Wait a minute. We have to have three copies?
Yes, she stated she needed three.
Excuse me, go ahead, I'll keep passing to you, I'm sorry.
That was it for me.
Uh, I just wanna say, uh, depending on actions and responses that we do come today, hopefully from Tony Frank, um, I will keep you in the loop, we'll know what we're headed to tomorrow. We had people in the audience early
Three or four ahead.
That were confused with what was happening yesterday as far as job description and a ten ninety-nine employee of our county. So we stated earlier that we will, uh, once we're at that point, that we will share with the public what the ten ninety-nine responsibilities will be.
Okay.
Best way to do that, in my opinion, is we actually write a, um, independent contractor agreement, just make sure we don't overstep the bounds of an independent contractor, which is what I think that those folks were concerned about, I think we'll be fine with that.
Anything else for us?
Nope, that was it.
Anything else for her?
You were wonderful and easy today, thank you.
This is probably the best part of the whole day.
You will, you will hear from me later.
Okay, and then you guys can let me know on-
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna.
Thanks.
All right. And now we have a first. She's welcome.
She's all warmed up for you?
Aw, thanks.
Well, Lisa, I apologize for not coming over personally.
No worries.
Up with you all day yesterday.
You met Clint Smith, I-
Good to see you.
Essentially.
I looked at your back when you interviewed.
Me too. Kelly, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you for volunteering at the health fair when we were behind, and you stepped in and helped.
Fun stuff.
Thank you for doing it.
Yeah. All right, so you'll have to kind of help me with how we go about this, but there's two things that we need to particularly look at, and that is, um, renewing Carmeline's contract.
Yep. That's on my, on my calendar.
Um, and then the other thing is, we talked about some orientation stuff for my position.
Some what?
Orientation, um, and-
For you?
Mm-hmm. It's my understanding that Gail Stolzfuss is willing to come back and do a few days with me. Um, if we're willing to pay her to do that, is that a possibility?
Absolutely.
Okay. Um-
Do we know how much she is requesting or what kind of-
Yeah, I think if we just shoot her something.
Details, and absolutely, we'd like you to be quoted.
Okay, yeah, probably just a couple of days, really, because by the time she's able to come, I'll have kind of an idea of what I need to know from her, and then, so it shouldn't be a lot of time, but.
It's very important for you to get up to speed. Don't sell yourself short by saving us two hundred dollars or something like, you know what I'm saying?
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
It's not significant, let's get it. You go up to speed as best as possible.
Well, I just want to add that she should probably tell our H R director.
Right.
Okay.
So she's aware that she's coming back, because there's paperwork to file.
Now, a normal procedure, though, isn't is to jump in and say, "We'll pay it normally, but you decide how much this is going to cost us."
I understand.
And then we do that, so that's, you know, there's a process that we do follow, we just don't jump in and say, "We'll pay it."
But the bottom line is-
I understand.
We want her down here to help you, so assuming it's not outrageous, I suspect we're gonna say it's okay.
I think knowing Gail, it's probably gonna-
Also, you're scheduled to go to a this week, something in San Luis Valley, wasn't there a training session or something?
You know, I don't have anything from San Luis Valley, I remember talking about that, but I don't I'll ask Rhonda if she knows.
Ask Rhonda, because it was something that I got from, it was a-
I know, we talked about that too.
Some kind of a session.
So in Denver, the twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-fifth is like a, a public health director orientation for three days, and that's gonna be, and I feel super fortunate, because apparently that only happens like every two years. And I talked to the director of public health in Pueblo yesterday, and she's been there two years and has never had that orientation, so. I'm excited about that.
Just a thought.
Okay.
I realize that having Gail on site with her train would be beneficial to you. But she does live in Denver, as I recall. And maybe it would be less expensive if we just had you, if we, I'm just a thought, that we have that occur around that same trip.
Okay.
Um, and you may be tired of, you may, sometimes I can only absorb so much in shorter time.
Right, let me get a little closer maybe to that.
Yeah, just, I don't, did you see where I'm coming from, that would make it easier for her.
Right, and I'll have the same list of questions here as there, so you're right, yeah, and if I have a computer, I'll be
Okay.
I have a desktop computer.
Okay, going through your report, how many do we have at the health fair? I know it is.
Yes. Well, what I have is just the, the lab numbers, so there was four hundred and sixty-three people in attendance that didn't, that had labs drawn. Um, and this-
So I would guess that that's pretty close to last year, or maybe-
Well, this report that Beth put together, so, I'm not-
Yeah, no, no, but I'm just, I know, but I'm just saying-
I'm not pawning it off on Beth, but I, but-
No, no, but I think it's-
So she says that there was actually less in attendance, but there's not an actual number. Um, than we had last year, slightly less in participation. Um, but it says the long, but there was longer lines for blood draws, which I know.
I think we're, it was successful.
I think so too, and it was, and there was more tubes, you know, like more tubes to draw per person, which takes longer, so.
Was there an issue with people showing up to do the phlebotomy?
I don't think so. I think it just, I think there was just more acuity than what we are used to, because there is, because we did, there was another lab that we did this year that we hadn't done before. It was like a, I don't know, testosterone level or something. And I think more people signed up for that than what they had anticipated, so I mean, when you think about four hundred and sixty-three people, and it's probably thirty seconds longer, still that adds quite up, so. Um, the one thing that stuck out to me though, which you guys probably don't even really care about, but our, seems like our county, our results out of range for hemoglobin A one C, which is our diabetic tracking, um, fifty-two percent of the people that got that test were out of range. So I'm gonna do some education on that and see if we can kind of help. I don't know, part of my, is public health improvement plan is gonna start right away, so I'm gonna put that in there, because it seems like things can be reached.
Okay, the school nurse, Mark Taylor stopped by one day and asked if we would be interested in continuing on. But a part of what has been paid for the school nurse salary come out of some grants. And, uh, do you know the status of, of we need to, if we're applying, and we need to be applying?
So it's my understanding that Ted Wigan and Cindy Howard have put together, oh no, that's M R C, I'm sorry, I got those mixed up. I'm still learning all these little acronyms. Um, but we do have that grant money for two thousand seventeen, is my understanding. I'll verify that to be sure. But it was what we put in the budget for the E P R. So do you have a copy of that? I just highlighted, so this, this-
Budget form, E P R. Oh, wait, O E P?
Yeah.
I'm trying to see which form that is, which one's that?
It's the E P R budget form.
Wait a minute, I think I have. Jay, look at, um, in our packet. In the packet dated for today, five three, down the bottom, there's a whole bunch of-
That's all right.
You're talking, so it's the Public Health Nurse Operating Budget, it's all the way to the right down the bottom.
And we got eighteen thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And that I think is about the same as last year.
Do you want, just want my copy? Because I have lots of copies, so.
Talking about, you found it, didn't you, Donna?
Yep. So that, that number is, I don't, so in this thing, they're asking for essentially a five hundred dollar increase for the entire year. Using that E P R grant, so this figure is with that included.
The eighteen two oh six includes that?
Mm-hmm. And this line that says Assistant E P R Planner, that's actually, that whole entire figure is Carmeline's salary, essentially.
For a year?
Mm-hmm. Because we only pay her for one day. A week.
We pay her a thousand dollars a month. That's her, that's what the county pays the school district. That's what we get, this, this current, did you find the, the I G A in here?
So I have a copy of the I G A, and it is it does have it all on page twos.
Okay, we, yeah, the agreement we have this current year is that the school district pays twenty-one thousand.
Correct.
Uh, Custer County, we pay six thousand. And the public health grant pays five thousand.
Thank you.
But you-
I have it.
Is that it?
I'm sorry.
Right, the grant pays, yeah.
So our finance office monthly writes a nine, this, this current year, writes a nine thousand, or excuse me, nine hundred and sixty-one dollar check.
To the school.
To the school district, and they take care of everything else.
Yeah, yeah, nine hundred and sixteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
So we're taking, he's talking about a five hundred dollar-
A year.
Now, did, did, uh, did Beth write this?
Yes. So she's requesting that, that the commissioners, or that, you know, that the county match the five hundred that we were able to do with the E P R grant.
Yes. Okay.
Can I just say, where are you seeing that increase of five hundred dollars, because I don't know where you are?
It's in the, yeah, it's like this part of the additional information.
Are you on this page, normalization, keep coming down. There you are, right, right there where it says additional information.
Okay. So you're asking the commissioners for a match of the five hundred dollars?
Yes.
Now, I think the school district gave her some money, or proposing to. We'll check with Mark and see if that was the the conversation we had wasn't real long, it was just, you know, he stopped in and said, "What you'd," I said, "Yes, we'll we'll work something out."
Talk about it, okay. Talk about it, okay.
When would this be effective? This says August one through July thirty-first.
That's her contract date, is my understanding, yeah.
Her contract with the school.
Correct. Which ours is in conjunction with that.
So we still have a little bit of time to find out what they did?
Think about it, yeah. Right, and to see what the school offered her as well.
But I think that's, you know, as we go forward, I think this is something that we sure need to, I'd like to see we can have this wrapped up by the first of next month. That reasonable with you, sir?
I've got it up here.
And what is VaxCare?
Okay, so VaxCare is a new... Bear with me, because I'm still trying to figure this all out, too. But it's gonna be essentially a kiosk that these people bring in, put in our clinic, I mean, in our office, in the clinic. And when we take a vaccine out, it's already logged in there, so they replace it. It's all billed, documented through their system. Apparently, several other public health agencies are using it and have been successful with it. It sounds good to me, because then it, it kind of separates us from the clinic, so that we don't have to rely on them for for record-keeping and...
Is that another refrigerator?
It is, but it would replace the refrigerator that we have, is my understanding.
Is it noisy this?
I should hope so. Oh, my goodness.
That's not a really good...
That office is horrible.
Okay, Clint, have you seen a copy of this VaxCare? Do you have a copy of the post-agreement?
I can give you this one if you'd like, because I can give a copy of it, too.
And this is clear at the end of my report. And it's...
It's included in the board package?
Yeah, and what happens is that when I open stuff, then it disappears sometimes, so I'm just gonna bring my laptop from now on, instead of having you send me the other way, because I lose stuff. Okay?
Okay. So we'll be having a meeting next week about VaxCare. They're actually gonna, the company's coming to kind of give us an in-service and their pitch on it. So if y'all would like to come, it's gonna be Tuesday.
Do you know when it's gonna be?
It's Tuesday, and I don't know why I didn't bring my day planner.
I've got it here. Tuesday, May ninth, at eleven A M. That's a year.
That's gonna be at your office?
Yes, yes. And Delwyn will be there, as well as...
What time is it?
Eleven.
Eleven.
Okay, I've got tourism.
I'm assuming that's at the clinic.
Yes.
Yeah, I'm tied up. Are you, can you go?
I'm frail, is it?
Fantastic.
All right.
Okay.
I have no other questions. Do any of you have any questions?
We just need correspondence with regards to what we asked about Gail.
Mm-hmm. I'll get on that this afternoon and let you know what I find out. And then, as far as the Carmelines deal with the school, will you be able to find out about that, and then you can kind of just let me know what you need from me?
Collectively, some of this, well, it's kind of falls under his, but she's, but she's the, you know, that's his area, but Donna works personnel, and this is a personnel issue, so...
Okay. Sounds good. So, yeah, I'll let you know as soon as I know or hear anything more from Gail and...
How are you doing?
Good.
We haven't told you yet?
Not yet. Day number three.
Have we encountered any major challenges with space or anything over there?
No, not really. I picked up a desk yesterday at Office Depot, and we hung from Pueblo, so that we can switch our stuff around, but other than that, yeah, we're cruising around along.
Don't ever hesitate to holler.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, kind of like acronym overload is what I feel like right now. I have a whole page.
You gotta be on our side. We don't have, it's your agency, we got all the others.
Right, right.
All right.
All right, thank you. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Okay.
Take care.
Back to the agenda items. I have this as a completion of our published agenda. Do we have anything else at this time that we need to discuss?
I did, Mr. Simmons.
I was just given something by our H R person regarding personnel.
I'll just deal with, talk to you, pray.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need to have another executive session?
No, he said he would talk to me.
Okay, so we're good. I will declare the meeting adjourned at twelve oh eight, and I will simultaneously declare the workshop.